They opened the next Asian Oncology Society special session is Professor Sung By E Kim, a professor to San Medical Center, University of Alson, Seoul, Korea. He is a member of the steering committees in several international clinical trials. His research interests are tumor immunotherapy, molecular imaging, early drug development, and clinical management of head and neck cancer, esophageal cancer, and breast cancer. He has authored several book chapters and written over one hundred forty articles in Oncology Peer Review Journal such as New England Journal of Medicine, Lancet, Lancet Oncology, and Journal of Clinical Oncology. Please welcome Professor Sung By E Kim.
Hello, dear colleagues. Welcome to the multidisciplinary head and next session. I'm Sung By Kim Medical Oncologist, Asan Medical Center, Seoul, Korea. Today, we have very renowned, internationally renowned speakers and distinguished panels. Our first speaker is Professor Joseph Tien Sing Wee from the Division of Radiation Oncology, National Cancer Center, Singapore. He's a recipient of two thousand twelve Singh House G C U Excellence Award, which is an outstanding clinician award. His talk today will be in Nasofering Jarkasnomas Phase Three, Four Current Issues. Please welcome Professor Joseph Tien Sing.
Good evening. My name is Joseph. I'm a radiation oncologist at the National Cancer Center in Singapore. And my topic for this evening is on Nasofering Jarkasnomas Stage Three and Four Current Issues. I have no conflicts of interest to disclose. When the New England Journal published the Sunyit Sen Cis Gem Induction Chemotherapy data sometime last year, one might be forgiven to think that induction chemotherapy is perhaps the new standard of care. After all, there are four other randomized trials all showing improvement with induction chemotherapy over concurrent chemo RT, either in terms of overall survival or at least in DFS. However, what has really been proven is that induction plus concurrent is superior to concurrent alone. And the fundamental question remains, is induction superior to adjuvant chemotherapy? For that, we need to turn to the Hong Kong zero five zero one trial. It is a pretty complicated trial. In essence, it's the Al Seraf versus the reverse Al Seraf trial. They also had five fractions a week versus six fractions a week, and they threw in an induction cisplatin zeloda arm. But if you look at the fundamental issue of induction PF versus adjuvant PF using five fractions a week, you'll find that there was really no significant difference between the two. And that's despite the regimens being tilted in favor of the induction arm with higher doses of cisplatin, five FU, and being cycled every twenty-one days as opposed to twenty-eight days for the adjuvant PF. The MacMath analysis presented at ASCO this year, and again, they showed that there was no significant difference in overall survival of PFS when directly comparing induction and adjuvant. So in terms of induction versus adjuvant, we know that induction, you are able to tolerate more chemotherapy, but you might over treat some. On the other hand, if you give adjuvant, it tends to be less tolerable, but you might be able to pick out those who do not need more chemotherapy. So the question that's asked then is where is induction chemotherapy best indicated? For this, I'd like to go back historically to the time of Al Seraf, when after that, a whole host of Asian studies came about. And what I'd like to highlight is between the differences between the Hong Kong and the Singapore study. Why did both differ in outcome? If you look carefully at the eligibility criteria, you find that the Singapore trial took in all stage three and four tumors, whereas the Hong Kong trial restricted it to N two and entry disease and excluded T three, T four, N zero, N one, who were enrolled into HK ninety-nine oh two. This suggested that perhaps there was a higher distant tumor burden in the Hong Kong cohort compared with the Singapore cohort. If you look at all the trials in a different way now arranging them according to their distant tumor burden, where those trials which only took in high distant tumor burden risk, for example, those with only N two and entry disease, you find that chemotherapy had no significant impact on distant metastases. The other trials that took in all come as stage three and four, there was significant difference. Lin J C also published in about two thousand and four, looking at chemo RT versus real therapy alone, that in the group which had higher risk, i.e. those with large lymph nodes, suprachiasmatic lymph nodes, and even though they were younger age group, the CCRT group failed to show any significant survival benefits. On the other hand, it was the low-risk patients that had benefit over real therapy alone. Again, if you compare the Hong Kong trial and the Singapore trial, you would find that when you have N two and entry disease, there was hardly any difference in the distant failure rates as opposed to when you took in all comers, there was a huge difference in the distant control rate as shown in the Singapore trial, suggesting that CCRT plus adjuvant chemotherapy can improve distant control for lower end stages. Again, if you look at the induction chemotherapy trial from Singapore, it was a negative trial. However, if you looked at the baseline EBV DNA, those above six thousand copies, there was benefit giving induction chemotherapy, whereas lower than that, there was no benefit with the use of induction chemotherapy. And then the two thousand patient study from Sunyit Sen again showed that compared to CCRT alone, induction chemotherapy appeared to be effective when the EBV DNA level was more than four thousand six hundred and fifty. So the observations we might make at this point of time is to say that the Al Seraf regimen appears useful only if the distant tumor burden is lower. And for those with a higher distant tumor burden, you might need a different strategy. And induction chemotherapy certainly allows more chemotherapy to be given. So if you have a low distant tumor burden and you are considering to use chemo RT plus adjuvant chemotherapy, the question is, is adjuvant chemotherapy always indicated? Previous studies have all been CCRT plus adjuvant chemotherapy versus RT alone, and there were very few pure adjuvant chemotherapy trials, and they were all negative. The only adjuvant chemotherapy trial was the one from Sunyit Sen published by Chen et al., and it showed no difference between induction, sorry, CCRT versus CCRT plus adjuvant chemotherapy, which begs to take a look at the different, the similarities between the induction GCP trial and this adjuvant Sunyit Sen trial that I've just alluded to. Both were negative, but both were negative because their control arms did unexpectedly very well. So in the Sunyit Sen, you could find that the CCRT plus AC arm achieved what they set out to show, but the CCRT alone arm matched what the CCRT plus AC was supposed to do. Similarly, in the GCP trial, the GCP arm achieved what we thought it would have achieved, but the CCRT alone also achieved the same figures. So the question is, why should that be so? If you look deeper at both trials, you realize that about two-thirds of patients in both trials were stage three patients. And the Taiwanese have shown in a paper just published very recently that suggested that if you had low risk of distant metastases, that perhaps there was no need for any adjuvant chemotherapy. And this question is being addressed by the NRG HN zero zero one trial, where after concurrent chemo RT, if the EBV DNA one week later was negative, you are then randomized between the standard Al Seraf Platinum five FU versus just observation alone. And they should be able to settle the question of whether using EBV DNA one week after chemo RT, you could pick those who need further adjuvant chemotherapy or those whom you could afford not to do so. Going back to the Hong Kong oh five oh one trial, there was the induction Platinum Zeloda arm. And what it showed was that this arm versus the adjuvant PF arm showed much better PFS without any increase in overall late toxicity. The loader is metronomic chemotherapy. And metronomic chemotherapy is defined as the frequent regular administration of drugs designed to maintain a low dose during prolonged periods and without inducing excessive toxicities. The Sunyit Sen group have completed a trial of concurrent chemo RT with or without adjuvants zeloda for a year. This has completed accrual, and we are currently awaiting results. In a similar vein, for oral fluorosil has been used concurrent with real therapy in the Hong Kong U trial published in the nineteen ninety East, again showing that real therapy plus UFT resulted in a much better distant control rate compared with real therapy alone. In a recent presentation ASCO, it was found that regulatory T cells can affect radiation sensitivity and durability. In fact, when they did found that tumors that had high regulatory T cells, that was associated with poorer survival. And in cell as well as mouse studies, you find that if you could remove the T cells, that it improved survival. What is interesting is that low dose cyclophosphamide actually removes regulatory T cells. And in this very old study from Taiwan, way back from nineteen eighty-four, they actually use oral cyclophosphamide fifty milligrams BID for the duration of the real therapy. And you find that in the group that had oral cyclophosphamide real therapy, they achieved a sixty-four percent five-year survival as opposed to only fifty percent with those who had radiation alone. I bring up this two reports from Indonesia to suggest that at the end of the day, one of the reasons why results have not been as good was because of the patients' poor condition. In these two studies, about one-fifth of the patients, or one-fifth of the results could be attributed to patients' poor condition. So it behooves us to find ways of improving the tolerability of concurrent chemo RT. The thighs have done a great job in substituting cisplatin with coboplatin, and they have done two randomized trials showing that coboplatin can equate cisplatin as well as giving adjuvant coboplatin five FU was useful. This is perhaps an opportunity for countries in this region to consider a phase three randomized non-inferiority trial comparing standard cisplatin real therapy versus oral cyclophosphamide real therapy and perhaps for the stage two, T three, T four, N zero, M zero, non-bauchi EBV DNA less than two thousand sort of patients. The ability to prove that oral cyclophosphamide real therapy is equivalent to cisplatin real therapy will ensure that a lot of patients will be able to tolerate real therapy much better than what they currently can. So in summary, you find the induction chemotherapy is best if there's a high distant tumor burden. There's really no difference between induction versus adjuvant chemotherapy, and not all patients will require adjuvant chemotherapy after they have received concurrent chemo real therapy. Metronomic chemotherapy, on the other hand, has low toxicity, low cost, and is very efficacious. You could use oral five FU or even oral cyclophosphamide, and the potential is that it can be given during real therapy instead of cisplatin. And with that, I thank you very much.
Our second speaker is Professor Kumar Prabhashi. He's a supervisor at the Medical Oncology Molecular Lab in Tata Memorial Hospital in India. He has published over a hundred research and review articles in peer-reviewed journals. Today, he'll speak on systemic therapy in head and neck cancer. How do we answer unmet needs? Please welcome Professor Kumar Prabhash.
Good evening, everyone. At the outset, I would like to thank the organizers for giving me this opportunity to speak today. My topic for presentation is systemic therapy in head and neck cancer. How do we answer our unmet needs? And what do I mean with that is the unmet need what we face in our patients, particularly in Asia, especially in our countries. So what I try to do is to see some of the questions what we had in our clinic and how we try to answer them. So one of the questions what we had for key or patient receiving chemo radiation in head and neck cancer, how can we make it better? For borderline unstable oral cavity cancer, which is a large patient tumor, what we come, which comes to our clinic, how can we improve their outcome? In predictive setting, we do know we have good data from Western world for which the chemotherapy and immunotherapy and targeted therapy is available, but majority of the patients can't afford it, so we try to develop alternate treatment. Targeted chemo radiation, can we make it better? This was one of the large trials which we did at Ata Hospital comparing in active setting of patient of oral cavity cancer after surgery for highest patient or not so highest patient and randomizing between radiotherapy versus accelerated radiotherapy versus chemo radiation. What we found that patients with highest feature, they did have improvement in overall survival and also they had improvement in local control, suggesting our patient also does similar as compared to what we see in Western world. Next question we had was, what should be the proper dose of cisplatin and the schedule of cisplatin? Because giving three cases of cisplatin is a challenge in developing country. We try to compare three cases of cisplatin as compared to three cases of cisplatin in our patients with highest feature. And here the three cases of cisplatin those were thirty-three percent of the study was used in the previous study. This is one of the largest studies in the setting, and what we found that the local little figure is far more in big cases of cisplatin as compared to three cases of cisplatin. In fact, it was far more than fourteen percent in big cases of cisplatin. We also tried to analyze the data for cumulative doses of cisplatin that appeared. The same remained true in spite of patients receiving adequate doses of cisplatin in both arm, suggesting there is some benefit for giving three cases of cisplatin in this setting as compared to big cases of cisplatin for local control, but overall survival in this style was similar. So this helps us in deciding that in our clinic, which way to use these drugs and what should be the schedule. Subsequently, we wanted to improve the treatment beyond only cisplatin. And this led us to do a three randomized trial comparing chemo radiation with cisplatin to chemo radiation with cisplatin plus nematocinema, which is the E A R inhibitor antibody. This was the trial design. This was a randomized trial where four hundred thirty-six patients were randomized between patients receiving chemo radiation plus nematocinema versus patients receiving chemo radiation alone. The follow-up was big during chemo radiation where it was being given, that every three monthly for two years, then every six monthly in the study. And what we found that patients receiving chemo radiation plus nematocinema, they had a better progression for survival, disease-free survival, and local control, which was statistically and clinically significant for patients receiving nematocinema. And this is one of the standard treatments in this situation in our country. Now, we had the second question which I talked about borderline incentive for oral cavity cancer. Can we imagine chemotherapy happening? This is true for our country, especially for oral cavity cancer, when we have a fair number of patients coming with very advanced disease in oral cavity cancer, and it is very questionable that can we operate them. Then we try to do, if we don't operate them, then these patients will either receive chemo radiation or radiation or paroxysmic therapy, which we know that average survival in this setting is in months. So we try to explore the role of new adjuvant chemotherapy in these unres可tible, technically unres可tible and borderline unres可tible patients, and to see that can they benefit these patients. This was a study of seven twenty-odd patients. And what we found that first we define those patients which we call borderline unres可tible, and these were the criteria that we used to define the patients who were borderline or technically unres可tible. Subsequently, after giving adjuvant chemotherapy, the patient who responded to treatment, they went for surgery. The patient who didn't respond to treatment, they went for various therapy based on M D T decision. It was either chemo radiation or radiotherapy or paroxysmic therapy. What we found that after giving adjuvant chemotherapy, forty percent of the patients went to surgery, which were not the second profferment, and they were borderline unres可tible, and even the rest of them, and two-year survival in that group of patients was around fifty percent, suggesting that these patients benefited. Otherwise, the average survival of these patients begins around eight months, suggesting that the intent of the treatment in these patients become palliative if we don't include surgery as a treatment for this group of patients. And this is one way to include surgery in this group of patients. We did have subsequent some more questions in this setting, but what happens to the margin? And what happens to the complication for these patients after surgery? Who receives large chemo therapy and not perform, margin was not an issue, and complication did not exist, which we published subsequently. Next issue what we found in our clinic was paroxysmic therapy. We do know system and immunotherapy, both of them are approved for system therapy in head and neck cancer and paroxysmic setting. But we also know that in our clinic, only one to two percent of our patients can take it, suggesting that we need to put effort to develop some treatment in the setting which can be used by majority for patients. We developed a treatment, what we call metronomic chemotherapy, and what means that using the dose of chemotherapy, the dose of one out of one fifth of the dose and give it more frequently. We developed methotrexate plus a sericocin combination in this setting, and initially we did a H two randomized trial, which suggested that it will improve progression for survival and also overall survival. This led to the three randomized trial which was around four hundred fifty odd patients randomized, suggesting that if you give oral metronomic chemotherapy, then it improves survival as compared to high chemotherapy and also improves quality of life in these patients. So yes, this is a not so fast therapy, and the cost of these patients remains around five to six dollars per month in this setting. Subsequently, if we take this concept further and rather give you two different combination therapy as a metronomic regime, we add alternative to methotrexate in setting also. This was a phase one or a phase two trial, suggesting that almost forty percent of the patients had a partial response in these platinum refractive patients. It also had promising progression for survival and overall survival in this setting. We have taken up this study further and subsequently we'll have the result in the future. So what we can conclude, that system therapy improves survival in active setting in head and neck cancer in highest patient. System therapy for our patients. And one important lesson is that collaborative work among Asian center may help answer many questions related to our patients. Thank you.
Maybe I can ask a question of Professor Kumar. When you opted the induction chemotherapy before surgery, were there any issues with margins or recurrences at margins? I mean, after all, you don't expect the tumor to sort of shrink. You know, there'll be residual cells left and stuff like that. So were there issues with margins and recurrences there?
So, Dr. Joseph, we do give induction chemotherapy in oral cavity in those specific situations, what we call technically unres可tible disease. And after chemotherapy, what you said is absolutely right. Majority means almost all patients, they do have a residual disease. Only few go in complete termination. So surgery is done, surgery is done with the revised tumor, which is left out with a wide margin. We did analyze our data regarding the margin, close margin and positive margin after surgery in these patients once they have received induction chemotherapy. And our close margin and positive margin positivity rate was around three percent. So that was fair, and in fact, we published the data. The data is in Oral Oncology, as a letter to editor. We also tried to compare our, you know, data of T four disease where we have done upfront surgery and did a match pair analysis for margin positivity. And again, though, it was similar. We did another study which was presented in ASCO this year for mandibular preservation trial after N A C T and revised margin. And we did look into the local recurrences in that. It didn't increase the local recurrence. But I need to emphasize that we do give this induction chemotherapy in only those technically unres可tible oral cavity cancer, not all of them.
Thank you. Can I just ask you one more question? After induction chemotherapy, do you end up with lots of patients who perhaps are unable to tolerate surgery? You know, how many of them, because of the chemotherapy, find themselves not being able to tolerate the rigors of surgery? Is that a problem?
So we, what we did, we did analyze our data for, you know, surgery and also the post-operative complications. I need to concede that there are a small number of patients which do develop complication which precludes the patient having surgery. But majority of the patient who requires surgery, they undergo surgery. So if I have to put a number out of hundred patients, we give induction, and if they require surgery, then almost ninety-five of them, they go for surgery. We also analyzed the data that post-op complications, it doesn't increase after induction chemotherapy. And it didn't, it was similar. You know, it wasn't more than our per primum surgery patients. We did compare that, and again, we published the data that, you know, what happens to post-op complication in this setting. So relatively safe, but having said that, adding that, we are a bit careful when we give it. We give those extra precaution care when we give those induction chemotherapy. We know that there is a subsequent treatment here which we need to be able to deliver. So if we have any doubt during the induction chemotherapy, think about if the patient develops lots of complication in first cycle, we don't go ahead with subsequent cycles. So we do take care of that. But putting all the things in perspective and the precaution we take, you know, by and large, patient who requires surgery, they undergo surgery.
Did you choose the patients upfront or did you allow, you know, after induction chemotherapy to select those who are fit for surgery? So because I presume that those with oral cancers probably have poor nutrition, you know, lose a lot of weight. And I presume that, you know, after giving platinum and five FU, I'm not sure that their ECOX status is going to pick up and things like that. So was the selection done before the induction or after the induction?
So, you know, first part, that how do we select? So we select upfront, patient who is fit for surgery are the only patient given induction chemotherapy. It's not the patient who is not fit for surgery, we give induction chemotherapy to make them fit. No, we don't do that. Patient who are fit for surgery, we are not able to do surgery because the tumor is in a place where margin is a issue. And as we have defined that if you have a buccal mucosa tumor, going up to zygoma where margin, getting a margin is a problem. Buccal mucosa tumor going to high I T F but not involving base of skull, again, where margin is a issue. Tongue tumor going up to hyoid. So these are fit patients which we know upfront that, you know, their issue is regarding receptibility, but their operable issue is not about unfit for being surgery. Then only we give induction chemotherapy in these patients. During induction, we do, we have learned a bit how to manage it. So regarding their nutrition, the swallowing and speech, we do, you know, put a bit of effort to ensure that they do get those nutrition, being monitored every week or alternate with regarding weight loss. So we take those extra precautions during giving this treatment.
Okay, thanks for your good comment. I think it's on time. I think we need to get started. First of all, this session is the multidisciplinary approach of the head and neck cancer. And in fact, Professor Sung By Kim will be the chairperson of this session, but I think he has some connection problem. And so as there is a time limitation, I think we And so as there is a time limitation, I think we can start now. First of all, I'm very honored to be here and very pleased to all of you. And welcome to this multidisciplinary session. I think today we have six panners and I think that we can introduce each other first of all. First of all, let me introduce myself. My name is Pamso Kim. I'm a medical oncologist working for Seoul National University Hospital. And I think today's, it's panel discussion will be very helpful for all of you. Thank you very much and I think we can go move around to next. Professor Yunseh Lee, can you introduce yourself?
Hi, hi everyone, my name is Yunseh Lee. I'm working at ASAM Medical Center in Seoul. I'm a head and neck surgeon. I'm interested in immunotherapy and combination trial. And I also like to reflect some tumors. So I'm really honored to share my experience with you guys. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joseph. I'm a radiation oncologist from National Cancer Center in Singapore. And my main area focus is on N T C. Over to you, Swatati. Tati, I think your, your mic is not on.
Yeah, okay, I'm Swatati Gondoviado. I'm a senior radiocent oncologist in Cipto Mangun Kusumo Hospital, the biggest hospital in Jakarta. From Faculty of Medicine, University of Indonesia, of Ran of Yosef V. And my main is head and neck cancer.
Hi, I'm Dr. Kumar Prabhas. I'm a medical oncologist at Tata Memorial Hospital in Mumbai. And my main interest is to develop cost-effective treatment, especially systemic therapy in head and neck cancer. And Samen Lam. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for this today's session, we have prepared two, two interesting cases. The first case is the oral pharyngeal cancer. And second case is recurrent metastatic major pharyngeal cancer. So we can move on the first case. And Professor Yunseh Lee will present the first case and then we can discuss each charter. Professor Yunseh Lee, please.
I have a patient who complained of the tongue mass left side. The tongue mass, so we pictured to add the posterior tongue and mouth floor and the tumoral lateral. Also, he has a neck mass left side, multiple neck mass. He has a pain and he cannot open his mouth so well. So unfortunately, he can eat some food, so there is no evidence of weight loss. The performance was so nice. We checked the punch five at the tongue and the sonar ID the F N A at the lymph node. So their final diagnosis was tongue cancer with a neck metastatic. So I have a question about that. Probably Pamso Kim already told you guys it's an oral pharyngeal cancer case. But at this time, we thought that it's probably originated from the tongue and it's a very huge tongue cancer. So do you guys usually check the H P V and P C C for all types of head and neck cancer? Dr. Kuma, would you please?
So we do test only for oral pharynx. For other sites, we don't test, you know, H P V in the routine care.
Okay, so how about Joseph?
It comes, I think, quite routine with the histol report, so we don't even have to ask for it. But usually we just reserve it for the oropharyngeal tumors rather than the oral cavity tumors.
Yeah, me to agree that it is done for the oropharynx, except also for the squamous cell carcinoma in the, that involve the oropharynx. So for oropharynx or the other S C C that involve also the oropharynx.
Yeah, so that, yeah, we also have the only, in case of the oropharynx cancer, P sixteen is routinely performed in only oropharynx.
Okay, I see. So we move on next slide. So we checked the M R and P C T. So M R showed that there is a mass involving the left mobile tongue and retumoral trachea, mouth floor. And very huge mass also involved in the terigoid plate and boss muscle. And the midline cross is also suspicious. So there is a terigoid plate, probably it's the tumor was involved in this site. And P C T showed fortunately, there is no evidence of this metastasis, except the cervical lymphoma metastasis. So the initial stage we checked, we thought that the clinical space, T four B and N two B and M zero. So what you're gonna do in this case? I think it's not, it's very difficult to remove whole tumor right now. Do you agree?
Yes.
Yeah, so what will be the next step? Dr. Joseph?
In my center, we just give him chemo R T.
Definitely with chemo radiation therapy.
That's right.
Yeah, so how about Siratine?
Yes, for me also in our department, because, because you know that we are living in Asian countries with the diversity of the everything included. The country income as well as the difference in the medical facility. So it depends on the expertise of the surgeon. Do they, can they do the surgery as it is like using the induction chemo and followed by surgery? Or we can do the chemo R T. But in our standard treatment, we do this chemo R T.
Okay.
So this, this is Pamso Kim from Seoul National University Hospital. And in this case, our center prefer the induction chemotherapy. I think that it is highly controversial area because the induction chemotherapy trial failed to demonstrate a definitive over survivor benefit. In many phase three clinical trials. However, in case of the patient, if the patient needs to rapid symptom leave. Or in practical reason, if there is a long waiting time until radiation or surgery. We prefer the induction chemotherapy in order to tumor shrinkage and in order to make her symptom leave.
Okay, how about?
That is our preference.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Kuma?
So in this situation, we make a bit of a distinction. In case if you have a, you know, terigoid plate, which is frankly involved. Then maybe, you know, it will be chemo R T, R T or other approach. In case it is not, then we do give induction chemotherapy. And we do have now, we published that data for around seven hundred plus patients. And now we do have experience of around three thousand plus patients with similar approach. Almost forty percent of them, we could make it respectable subsequently, which we think is a very important modality in oral cavity cancer. Bringing surgery as a part of treatment and that is the endeavor. I do concede that induction chemotherapy to improve survival is not the endeavor here. It is to make them respectable and that is what we have followed. I know in this second for these kind of patients.
So. This is Songbe, sorry for the late at this joint. So the, for me, I would like prefer to give definitely the chemo radiotherapy. But because of the patients are still in hesitant surgery to get the surgery or chemo radiation, induction is an option. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So we first thought it's, I think it's regarded as an oral cavity cancer. So we thought that induction chemotherapy and will, if the tumor would be shrunk enough, we're gonna remove a whole tumor. So we performed the induction chemotherapy for two times. Doctors already talked about the induction chemotherapy in this area. So this is the previous, the initial M R I. And this is the M R I after induction chemotherapy. One made TV or show that there is a very successfully shrunken tumor. So also the corona image showed that there is no evidence of the tumor involving the terigoid plate. So also on physical reason, the tumor is shrunken enough. So he can move his own tongue very without pain, so softly. So we evaluated this patient as a partial risk test. And there is some suspicious region at beyond the tongue and whole tumor size is not that so definite. So we thought that the tongue cancer and the stage would be a T four A and to be an M zero. So we planned the wide extent via mandibular tunnel and neck dissection and free flap reconstruction. So after surgery, we received the pathology report. There is a multipocal region less than one centimeters. And there is an endolipatic emboli and a lymphovascular invasion and the multiple metastatic lymphoma. So the pathologist checked the P sixteen and H P V status. There, the P sixteen and H P V was were positive. So final diagnosis would be a H P V related oral pharyngeal cancer. The final stage when the pathology stage, T one and N two and M zero. So what will be your next step? The OJVNT treatment, I think, is quite necessary for this patient. What do you think, Ho? Yeah, I mean, what kind of OJVNT therapy you will choose? The R T alone or C C R T? Or I think the surgery is enough, so or just active surveillance? What do you say? Dr. Joseph? I cannot hear you well.
Received a lot of chemotherapy. I would probably just opt for real therapy alone rather than chemo R T. Just remind me, were the margins positive? Was there any extra capsular spread? You know, if there were none of those features, then probably just real therapy alone.
Okay, there is, there was no other features like the extra capsular spread and the margin, involve, involve the margin. So. Okay. How about Dr. Shurati?
Yes, for me also the R T alone, six, sixty degree.
Sixty degree, sixty degree, okay. How about the Pamso Kim?
Ah, yeah, as there is no adverse features such as margin positive or extra capsular spread. I prefer the radiation alone rather than concurrent chemo radiation. Surely, this patient is a P sixteen positive. And sometimes we can expect a good prognosis because this patient is P sixteen, P sixteen positive. However, she's very initially burky tumor and the has regenerative disease after induction chemotherapy. So I think the adjuvant treat is absolutely needed and I think the radiation is enough for this patient.
Okay, how about Dr. Kuma?
I agree that adjuvant treatment is needed. And in this situation, we do understand that induction chemotherapy followed by R T is also a fair option overall. Here we did have a surgery also as a part of treatment. So that may be good enough for this patient. So R T as an adjuvant alone.
Okay. We already discussed this patient with Songbe Kim because we work as same hospitals. So the, the final decision was the OJVNT, I'll write this therapy alone. Yep, fortunately, we checked the C T neck after four months. After finishing completing whole treatment. So there was no evidence of recurrence and the oral cavity was so clean and there was no palpable masses. But unfortunately, he visited our clinic again because of a vague headache. So we checked the C T neck and there is a lesion in the some left ethmoid and the spinal, spinal science and major cavity. The tumor was involving the left carbina sinus, very obiter feature and very extensive region. It's a little bit far from the primary region. The primary reason is involving the left terigoid plate, but the tumor is a little bit higher. So I'm so a little bit, it's a little bit controversial, is it a local recurrence or second primary tumor? What do you say? How about Joseph? Dr. Joseph?
I might think that this, this is probably a separate tumor rather than a local recurrence.
Okay, Dr. Shurati?
Also, it is something like a secondary primary, except that if there is a perineral invasion. Is that perineral invasion or not? If it is, if there is a perineral invasion to the ganglion of Svenopallatinum. It could be that it is a continuity spreading from the primary tumor. So it should be really detailed in the imaging, to see the imaging. But, but when we see just that imaging, it looks like that, something like secondary primary tumor.
Okay. Dr. Kuma?
While Dr. Kuma is thinking about the primary, second primary. So I also consider this as second primary. But when we consider local regional recurrence versus second primary, distance also. And the time differences are important. Usually second primary developed three years later. But if you look into the epicenter, I thought initially there's more the originated tumor. But the extent is just arising from the tumor side, the receptive side. So maybe as local regional recurrence is also more preferred of consider.
Okay, because I'm surgeon, I favor removing tumor. But in this case, unfortunately, we cannot remove whole area. So I think the chemotherapy or other medical treatment would be quite necessary. So in this case, what would be your next treatment? Treatment, the chemotherapy or immunotherapy recently developed? And what would be a good predictive testing for the immunotherapy or next, next treatment? It's quite difficult question, but I need to consult you the medical oncologists and the radiation, radiation therapy.
If you consult me.
Yeah.
Sorry for, I, because I was late, I need to say. The chemotherapy was given, but it occurred within one year after completion of, within completion of the chemotherapy. So considered to be, even though the tumor respond to chemo. Maybe classified into chemosoma resistance. So the sixty-year-old woman recurred after surgery within one year. So if P D L one positive say was done, will immune checkpoint inhibitor container regimen is firstly considered.
Okay, you mean mono therapy or the combination therapy?
If the symptomatic, if the patient said tolerate the chemo. Depending on the symptom tolerability, the physical condition. Immune checkpoint inhibitor plus chemo would be an option for this patient.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they, it is very difficult question. Even though this patient is regarded as a second primary or a recurred. Anyhow, if this, if this patient is unrespectable, so palliative chemotherapy will be considered. The recurrence or the detection is happened after eight months later after finishing the radiation. So this patient can be regarded as a cisplasmic. So this patient can be regarded as a cisplatin, still sensitive patient and can be regarded as a recurrent metastatic first-line setting. A couple of years ago, we have only one option, five-epoxy-cisplatin, setoxime. Is the only option for the recurrent metastatic first-line setting. However, nowadays, the era of the immunotherapy, we have keynote 48 trial data. And we have, I think, the three options. The first option is pembrolizumab monotherapy. And second option is five-epoxy-cisplatin plus pembrolizumab. And third option is still five-epoxy-cisplatin, setoxime maps are called extreme regimen. It depends on the PDL one positivity. If the patient is as PDL one strong positive and relatively small disease burden and slow indolent disease. And I think many physicians prefer the pembrolizumab monotherapy. However, the PDL was strongly negative and patient need rapid symptom relief. In that case, extreme regimen, five-epoxy-cisplatin and setoxime is still, I think it is a good option. Because in many countries, pembrolizumab first line is not yet approved, as far as I know. And cytotoxic chemotherapy has a still high response rate compared to pembrolizumab alone. So it depends, the treatment depends on the PDL one positivity and the patient's symptom and the approver status of the pembrolizumab as a first-line setting. That's my thinking.
So to summarize, the PDL one is a good indicator for the immunotherapy, right? And then I have a question about the radiation therapy. I think it's a little bit far from the primary reason. I don't think this area is covered by the initial radiation therapy. Can you add more in this area, Doctor Joseph?
Yeah, I think it does look like it's about a mile away. So certainly, I mean, you can treat, especially if you think that it's a separate primary and then you just treat just to that region itself without trying to go with huge margins or anything of that sort? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other comments or question about this patient?
What do you do with it?
For me, can I say something?
Yeah.
For me, for me, if the surgery still can be done, surgery is the first. Whatever it is, the recurrent from the primary tumor or it is a secondary tumor. But the surgery should be done if it is possible and then followed by radiotherapy. But if it is not possible, so we are agreed to do the radiotherapy with a more precise technique. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think the proton therapy or other treatment, radiation modality would be helpful for this patient if possible. So this patient, the patient will be closed because of time limit. So I think it's better to move on next patient. Doctor Song Bekim, would you please?
Yes, so thank you for your active sharing your expertise. Now we move to the second case, will be presented Doctor Pomso Kim.
You are muted, Professor Kim?
Oh, I'm sure. I have, I'm very sorry. Furthermore, I have some problem with the sharing my screen. I have some connection problem. So I'm using my iPad to present my case. Can you hear me? Can you see me? Yeah. Okay, this, I'd like to share my experience about the one major pharyngeal carcinoma patient. This patient is a nineteen-year-old patient. He was presented with UFO list and he was diagnosed with a Berkey major pharynx cancer with lymph node enlargement. So at the first time, we gave induction chemotherapy, to the taxacisplatin. At that time, there was no data about with the gemside of cisplatin. So after induction chemotherapy, there is no definite tumor response. However, we gave the definitive concurrent chemo radiation with please cisplatin. The response was partially plus. But unfortunately, after eight months later, human we gave the cranial therapy and whole brain radiation. But unfortunately, after immediately two months later, systemic recurrence with the multiple lung metastases happened. So five-epoxy-cisplatin chemotherapy were given. This slide shows the initial tumor mass and there is a long metastasis and multiple lung metastasis. And even though the retro side of the lung, there is a small long node. In that case, what is your next plan for this young male patient? In brief, the patient experienced induction chemo followed concurrent chemo radiation, but brain metastasis. And after whole brain radiation, long metastasis happened and first line five-epoxy-cisplatin was given, but progression. I think the many option will be possible, the gemsideabin-based chemotherapy, gemcis or the gemsideabin single or the toxin such as tosytoxel or the metastatectomy of the lung can be possible. And checkpoint inhibitors such as pembrolizumab or niboluma can be applied or the other clinical trial or the best supportive care, that is all possible answer. And how do you think about the manager of this patient? Doctor Kuma, how do you think about the next plan?
So I know we would have done a similar management. Maybe in today's time, you would have preferred to give three drug or maybe gem seven platinum in induction. Otherwise, plan would have been similar. Subsequent plan is pretty tough in this situation. And as you said, all options are open. Best would have been a clinical trial if available, in case available. Because all other options, maybe apart from immunotherapy, which looks like relatively novel, the chances they will respond to other therapy is limited because the patient had behaved in a way which looks far aggressive than the usual nasopharyngeal carcinoma. So fairly aggressive tumor. Clinical trial, if possible, maybe immunotherapy. Otherwise, all other choices may be similar.
Yeah. Thank you, good comment. And how do you think about this patient's next plan? Is there any other opinion or?
So subsequent plan, as I said, clinical trial would be the best possible option for him. If it is not there, then I'll prefer moving beyond chemotherapy because patient has not done well with this treatment, chemotherapy in the past. So maybe immunotherapy in this setting.
Okay, that is very good comment. As you mentioned, at this moment, we have the pembrolizumab clinical triaries open. And we decided to ignore the clinical trial and pembrolizumab is given to this patient. And as you can see here, the tumor mass is rapidly shrinkage and pembrolizumab response was pretty good. And the patient has no adversity event and the patients is pretty good with the pembrolizumab single. I think that as all of you know, that the major pharynx cancer has PDL one strong positive because of the EBV virus infection is unregulated PDL one expression in the tumor cells. So basically, the major pharynx is also the immunogenic tumor. So far, the preliminary data of the page two clinical trial supported about twenty or fifteen percent of responses observed in recurrent metastatic major pharyngeal cancer. He is relatively very fine with the checkpoint inhibitor. The mass was shrinkage and the tumor mass was pretty good. However, unfortunately, after two years later, the pembrolizumab, the progressive disease happened in the multiple lung node. It is not a common situation because as you know, once the checkpoint response happened, the durable response observed. And many patients received the checkpoint more than two years or etc. However, in this case, the progressive disease happens after two years later. So in this case, so-called acquired resistance to the checkpoint inhibitors happen. What is your next plan for this patient? I think the same option, the gemsideabin, this patient is gemsideabin naive patient. So gemsideabin is plating or gemsideabin is one of the option. And toxin-based regimen is still option. And metastasectomy or the clinical trial is one of the option. How do you think about the next plan? Professor Song Bekim, do you have any other option for this patient?
So the patients received the checkpoint how long?
Three years.
Yeah, three years, but.
Two years, yeah, he's long responding to checkpoint during two years, but unfortunately, resistance happened after two years.
The progression was noted the initial site or other site?
Initially, long metastatic site and otherwise the brain metastasis, no problem and only long metastasis progressive disease.
So long metastatic site was a regress, then regrowing was.
Right, exactly.
Metastatectomy, depending on the accessibility, could have been an option. Or also, if the patients are concerned about reluctant to get surgery, gemsideabin. I think gemsideabin is based on limited experience. Sometimes they are tolerated more than two years. So gemsideabin containment option. If the patients are tired, systemic therapy, metastatectomy is also an option if the patients agree.
Yeah. Is there any other opinion? Or agree with that option? Yeah, okay, that is very good point. And before deciding the metastasectomy, we prefer the PET city scan. And PET city scan revealed that only long metastasis progression and there is no definite other metastatic site. At the very initial presentation, this course was relatively aggressive. I mean, the concurrent, right after the finishing the concurrent chemo radiation, long metastasis happened and brain metastasis happened. So at the very initial phase, we did not consider the metastasectomy. However, we thought that the disease become relatively indolent with the pembrolizumab two years. And as you can see here, the PET city scan, there is no definite progressive disease of the lung. So we suggested a long metastasectomy and the lung mass was surgically removed. Because this patient is pretty young patient and there is no comit mobility and surgery was well performed. And the interesting thing is the PDL one immunos chemistry is still strong positive and EBV insight is still positive. So I think that this is the interesting case because that is my first case, the acquired resistance in major pharynx cancer. So we gave some preliminary translational research such as before and after surgical sample, we prefer the many immunos chemistry or etc. Because the PDL one is still strong positive. I think there is some resistance mechanism is involved in this patient. But as you can see here, the CD eight positive T cell numbers markedly decreased compared to initial tumor tissue. So I think the T cell exhaustion or the absence of the T cell is one of the resistance mechanism of the checkpoint inhibitor. But it is anecdotal case and just one case. And we cannot say conclusively, T cell, absence of the T cell is the one of the checkpoint inhibitor. So far, the CD eight positive T cell distribution is changed after pembrolizumab progressive disease. And then I think that this is my last slide. And I think the multidisciplinary approach of the recurrent metastatic major pharynx cancer is pretty difficult. I think before giving the systemic chemotherapy, some patients have benefit from local treatments such as metastasectomy or radiation or etc. So I think it is very important to identify who will benefit from the metastasectomy or the radiation even in a stage four disease. Joseph, how do you think about the long radiation or the radiation therapy in stage four major pharynx cancer?
You're talking about stage four with the metastatic. So basically, there's a trial from Sunet Sen, which shows that for those who present with metastatic disease, after maybe six cycles of so-called palliative chemotherapy, that if you added local real therapy, you actually had a survival advantage. I think that just came out in, was it JAMA Oncology or something of that sort, quite recently. So nowadays, for those with a de novo metastatic NPC, we would start off with six cycles of prolysis gem and then follow up with actually local regional real therapy as for any other cancers. For solitary metastases, there's the option between surgery or something like SBRT. And you know, I'll send to my colleagues who do SBRT to see whether they are amenable for that. And that would have been my preference, if it was an oligomet. I just have two comments about this case. The first was that the brain met, was it a biopsy proven brain met? Because brain metastases in NPC is extremely rare. In all my experience, I've only seen one case with actual brain mets. And it's a funny thing that NPC hardly ever metastasize to the brain. So you know, if I were you, I would go back to, I think you said you had a resection or something of that sort. Go back to quickly grab that sample of the brain met and do some, you know, tumor genetics, genomics, whatever it is, and compare with basically the primary tumor and see whether you can learn something from there. I think in the whole world, the literature, there's probably less than twenty cases of documented brain mets from NPC. And even if I were to quote John Ho, you know, he says that with his vast experience, he's hardly ever seen anyone with brain mets. And that's something really strange about NPC. The second thing that I just wanted to say was that, you know, for countries in this region where immunotherapy at all may not be something that is affordable, obviously, gemsideabin is a good second-line drug. But if you need to go to third line, there was actually a paper coming out from the Hong Kong University looking at metronomic cyclophosphamide. And they actually, as third line, you know, it was very, very tolerable. And they actually achieved, I think it was at least a twenty percent overall response rate, even as a third-line therapy. So that's something to be considered, especially if you come from maybe the more southern part of Southeast Asia.
Thank you very much, good comment. I did not prepare the brain MRI immediately, however, this patient is actually. However, this patient is actually the um not solitary brain metastasis. But dura invasion and directly invasive invasion and Berkey brain mass formation and with this surgically remover. And I, yeah, anyhow, I strongly agree that brain metastasis is very rare in major pharyngeal cancer. And the second thing is that the second or sole line chemotherapy, gemside ribbon, cytotoxic cyclophosphamide, I think is very good option. But in South Korea, gemside ribbon is not uh reimbursed by the insurance company. And so the gemside ribbon or checkpoint is approved, but cannot use the uh. The patient should pay out of pocket money for the cost, that is another practical issue in Korea. Okay, yeah.
Question to the Dr. Pomsak Kim, so the patient to receive the metastasectomy turn out the pestilential report lymph node five node positive. So how long is she free now, how long after?
Yeah, after brain met, after long metastasectomy, uh we gave the palliative chemotherapy with a gemside ribbon single. Uh but unfortunately, after six months later, the disease rapidly progressive disease. And uh he passed away uh with the disease progression, it is very sad story. Uh but anyhow, the what I want to discuss with you is that the. Uh even though the aggressive major pharyngeal cancer, some patient can be benefit of the checkpoint inhibitor. If such as two years long term benefit. And the however, checkpoint inhibitor can also develop the acquired resistance. And then the tumor biology becomes uh aggressive again and the patient has passed away. But anyhow, the do you, do you, any other people have some experience of the checkpoint inhibitor in major pharynx cancer? Uh I have very small experience, the case is a very representative case of the good response. If some other patient does not responding to pembrolizumab, even though the P D L one immunochemistry is strong positive. So I think they will need more biomarker except the P D L one in major pharynx cancer, yeah.
I'd like to ask uh ask two questions, Dr. Kumar. So you, in your lecture, you put also addressed the meta metronomic therapy as as uh in in India. And one of the question coming from the audience is that the uh the the progressive meaning of P sixteen. So should we differentiate the treatment and localize head and the cancer according to P sixteen? The first question. So second question is the the optimal sequence, uh metastatic orofaryngeal cancer. Uh the systemic therapy incorporating met meta metronomy therapy.
So uh the first one, uh metronomic chemotherapy, uh you know, in head and a cancer in recurrent and metastatic patient. So what we had done was we were developing this treatment as compared to chemotherapy. And we did one, you know, phase two study to compare this with I V chemotherapy that was single against cisplatinum. It was promising, so we did a phase three study, four hundred, you know, thirty odd patients. And it was found that it is safer and it does add a life to the patient as compared to I V chemotherapy. And again, I need to concede here, it was single against cisplatinum. So it looks like it works in this setting and especially in the uh you know, situation where. Uh only, you know, ten percent of our patients can take immunotherapy, so that becomes a viable option, which is easy to take. Yeah, small group, a group of patient in head and a cancer where solving is the issue, it becomes a challenge because these are oral tablets. But in majority of them, it is easier because they can take it at home. Uh we talked about P sixteen, uh P sixteen, uh you know, oropharyngeal cancer. We do it routinely in our locally advanced oropharyngeal cancer. And it does distinguish between, you know, patient having a good prognosis versus bad prognosis. And same was in our data, which we published. Uh and we are aware of it, there are many data on this, so it becomes useful. But in today's time, we don't, you know, decrease the treatment. So idea of deescalation of treatment at this moment is not proven, we shouldn't do that. In fact, there are two trials of a different way of deescalation, that was cetuximab versus cisplatinum. And it was found that cetuximab was inferior, both of them in H P V positive patients. So at this moment, deescalation is not a good idea, so we should be treating them as we treat H P V positive patients. But prognosis are different, that's true. Did I miss other part of the question, uh, doctor?
So what is the positioning of a metronomic therapy in the treatment of recurrent metastatic head and a cancer? So you want to.
If we do have.
Metronomic therapy in the first or later line setting, yeah. Positioning of metronomic therapy based on your positive data.
So if we have immunotherapy for a patient, then we do go ahead with immunotherapy or cetuximab upfront. And the metronomic chemotherapy, we had a phase two study for in second line setting. Where we had a forty percent patient responding to it, we take in second line. In case if we don't have a immunotherapy and cetuximab in first line setting. And in that setting, if patient is has a lot of symptoms, then we use combination chemotherapy or high volume tumor. If you don't, then we do use metronomic chemotherapy as a first line treatment, you know, in these patients.
Okay, thank you very much, yeah. Any other comments or additional questions? Yeah, we already passed the time, so thank you for sharing the pearls of your experience head and a cancer. It was very helpful to guide how to manage this difficult to treat these patients. Thank you for the joining the session and thank you for your comment, thank you for active participant. Have a good, enjoy the rest of the A O S meeting, thank you, bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.